For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pro call.
That'd be bad, I'm sorry.
Pro call, I hear.
Tony Richards?
Approve it.
Linda Bedwell?
Here.
Les Newman. Ed Singleton?
Present.
Greg Sapp?
Present.
All right, before we get started, I have a disclaimer to read. So this is a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. And your participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and be rebroadcast on the city's social media pages. If you have a cell phone, it would be greatly appreciated if you put those devices in airplane mode or turn them off. All right, and your packet was approval of the minutes from the August meeting, August eleventh. Have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second, I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Tony Richards?
Yep.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
All right, also in your packet is claims properly signed for your approval.
Make a motion.
To approve claims properly signed and submitted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the claims that were properly signed. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yep.
Also in your packet is approval of the payroll allowance docket.
I make the motion, we approve the payroll docket.
I'll second it.
So motion's been made and seconded to approve the payroll allowance docket. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Okay, also in your packet is the approval of the fund report for your approval.
I make the motion to approve. Fund report has submitted.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the fund report has submitted. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yep.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Okay. The appropriation report is in the packet for your approval. Should be in your packet. It's not in there?
I make a motion to approve the appropriation report as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the appropriations report is submitted. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Tony Richards?
Yep.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
All right, new business. In your packet is ordered as twenty twenty-five dash oh four, public records request. Last month was the first reading, this will be the second reading for your approval.
I have a couple of questions on it. In section three, item number, uh, there's one, there's A then one, two, three, and then right below it, it says the request is denied in whole or in part, whether or by withholding or requested record, redacting for a requested record, stating the specific exemptions prohibiting disclosure and a brief expla- explanation of how the minute stops.
Definitely an incomplete sentence. You familiar with that, Sam?
Did you see it was?
Yeah, no. Claudia put this together, and I agree, that's incomplete.
Something we should table until she can hear.
Yeah, Claudia put this together and I don't, I don't have the stuff with me to answer it on the fly. It's definitely incomplete, but I can't, I don't want to shoot with the head and tell you how to fill it in without checking on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure at the end of the sentence, what it's meaning would be, if there's more to it.
Anytime you deny a public record request, you, I mean, you do have to explain, you know, why you're denying it in some fashion. Um, and I suspect that the rest of that sentence is just about, it's a brief explanation of, you know, why the further information about why you're denying or partially denying the request, but without the statute in front of me, I'm not, I don't want to say for sure.
Since the author isn't here, I think we should table that until she's here to complete that sentence or whatever it is.
I make a motion to be table ordinance number twenty-five oh four until next council meeting.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to table the action on the ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four, public records request. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yep.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Also in your packet, following the public meeting we just had, is the water rate, municipal water rate increase. Your review and approval.
I make the motion to accept the water rate increase as submitted.
I'll second.
So motion's been made and seconded to approve the water rate ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five as submitted. Any discussion?
Well, like I stated in the, um, public hearing, I wish we could have done instead of the, and this is just an average of what it'll be, the eleven dollars per four thousand gallon usage in a two and a half person.
Yes, ma'am.
Two and, two and a half person. Uh, I guess the haps are my dogs, but anyway, I wish we could have done it, uh, eleven dollars may not seem a lot to some people, but we're a forty thousand dollar income yearly is our average. Eleven dollars fortunately won't affect me, but it'll affect some people. I just wish we would have been able to maybe done it in increments of five dollars per year and then the eleven dollars for, or the balance the next year. I think it's going to be quite a blow to some people. And, um, I know it's needed, but, um, I just wish we could have went about it a different way.
I agree with that, and typically I, I do recommend, um, increases that are spread out over a course of period of time. And, um, I believe that, you know, that was something that maybe should have been done a few years ago. Um, and, you know, when we had done our water utility analysis, you know, every, every, every year, two years or so, and, and we can kind of start to see that operating balance trending downwards and, and in order to remedy that, our recommendation was to make transfers from a different water fund that had excess funds, that would be the debt service reserve fund, had to be at a certain level while you had the bonds outstanding. Once those bonds paid off, there was money in that fund to where we were able to make that transfer over to the operating fund, which then was able to delay an increase until this time. Um, you know, looking back, I think it would have been worthwhile to do a smaller increase then. Um, and then in future years, I, I do recommend to look at the water rates every three or four years. Um, particularly in the utilities, when you see those fund reports every month. If there's, if that starts to trend downwards, that's typically the first sign of that cash balance going down, kind of as a a tell, you know, a sign that we can maybe start to look at that utility again. But every three to four years, I would definitely recommend some sort of rate analysis just to see where you're at, and then hopefully get ahead of it in the future so that, you know, we can do incremental increases, um, so that it's not such a huge blow right up front. That's why we have the recommendation for section three in the ordinance.
Say what?
That's why there's the section three in the ordinance every three years that we've already studied and all recommendations of our financial consultants.
Any further discussion?
I just got a comment of a county mayor. I don't like doing a water increase. I, I just like her about, uh, because that was explained to us at our meeting we had the other day on it. We had a couple of disasters. Water leaks we had to take care of in town. Explained to us about how we had to clean the new wells, which is another fifty, sixty thousand dollars we had to do that we wasn't expecting. And like I say, yeah, maybe we should have been doing it, but if you figure it out, it's, it's less than a dollar a year because we haven't had an increase for twelve or thirteen years. Uh, and hopefully this will take care if we have disasters happen like we've had happen. I mean, it's just to cover our, it's valid. But yeah, we have to do it, just the need is there.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
No.
Ed Singleton?
No.
I understand, Sam, in the case of the tie, that the mayor is the deciding vote.
Correct.
The mayor votes yes. So in your packet is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six, dealing with the redistricting. This was an action that you approved in the April council meeting to realign and rebalance the numbers for the voting districts. An ordinance has been prepared with this map included to cover the approval. This is a county requirement that is be done via ordinance.
Don't believe the council received that in our package.
We didn't receive it.
All right, let me table that because it just got it today, so it did not get in your packet.
What, which, what is it?
The pre-redistricting ordinance.
That's the, my understanding was that you guys had already approved that in, in a vote of the council, so the, this is just sort of putting on paper what you had approved in a previous meeting.
I'd like to take a look at it. I had a couple of questions I, about it. You want to table it, or?
Yeah, let's table it. I think we may have to have a special meeting to approve it, but let's table it. This is the actual map tied to the redistricting, and this is yours as presented. So I will provide this a copy to you. I know I just got it this afternoon.
Well, and like you and I have talked a couple of times, there's nothing against the people, but we've got people that aren't paying city taxes but are voting, um, in our city election. There, there was a kind of a zigzag line in a certain area, and I really would like to get that straightened out. I don't, before we, or ask, at least find someone who has the answers to it. So that, that was my question about.
I think that's a separate issue.
Yeah, I, I think that's a separate issue, and we are, we are past the deadline to get this done, so I would, I don't, I don't, there's not, as far as I know, there, there's nothing about what was reduced to writing with the ordinance that's different than what you guys already approved. I think the mayor just didn't realize that the county needed an actual written ordinance.
I wasn't informed that they needed an actual written ordinance until about a week and a half ago. I thought, and I sent them the copy of the meeting minutes approving the actual redistricting as presented. Then she came back finally a month and a half later and said, no, they need an ordinance. So I apologize for not getting your packet, I just, that it is something that we, I think is time constrained. So I may have to have a special meeting to get, actually get the ordinance approved for their requirement, for their state requirement. So that'd be your recommendation, Sam, to table this until they see it along with the budget, maybe have a special meeting to approve it.
I, I, I just, I think we need to get it done as soon as, as soon as we can, so. I guess I did, I didn't, I couldn't get it to you any earlier than I did, but I, I thought that would be okay, given that they'd alr- they'd already approved it.
And here's a, a amplification of the map, if you want to see the map. So what did you ask to change the numbers?
It's something I remember, we talked about this because it evens out the number of voters per district. And I don't, I, we've redistricted before. This is not the first time we've had to redistrict a district. And that comes with the county, that's mentioned in our plan, can you tell me?
The, what does what come from?
The, the redistrict, and they draw it up. They, they're the ones that draw it up.
We had a, we had sort of a consultant, uh, Jack, what's his name?
His last name was Smith, wasn't it?
He was out of Knox County, one of the
Shelton, right?
Shelton.
David Shelton.
Out of Knox County, the redistrict based upon the balance of the numbers.
Yeah, he consults with a lot of, um, cities, towns, school districts to help them get in compliance with the statute.
And I mean, basically all this does is even up the number of voters per, per each section of the city.
I think it decreases your population variance from, what was it, eighteen percent down to one point eight?
Right, so I mean.
You're just, you're just moving, moving boundaries around to make the districts basically have the same population in each one. So that somebody's vote in one district isn't more valuable than somebody else is in a different district.
I think there's only two districts affected with the re- redrawing to accommodate the numbers.
And I say, I think I really, very enough, I like this, that we have discussed it.
You discussed it, oh, that's, yeah, last council.
I mean, so.
I think you guys voted to approve it. Well, I don't remember if I was here or not, but I, I know there, I know it was, it was voted.
Right, it was voted, you approved it in the April meeting for the redistricting numbers and the, and the way it was set up. It, it was, I thought that was acceptable to the county, but she finally got back to me and said that that had to require an ordinance.
But I mean, like I say, if we've already voted on it and all that, and that's all the details, this ship and John go from here to even up everybody's district. I mean, uh, I'll make the motion to go ahead and accept the ordinance twenty, twenty-five oh six, precinct free district.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made and said, and seconded to accept the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash oh six redistricting ordinance? Any discussion? Call for vote?
Tony Richards?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Also in your packet was the, uh, twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, twenty twenty-six budget for your first reading, since we had the public hearing. So it's for your information only.
You didn't get it, I don't think, Greg.
No, I should need it on that.
No, actually, need it on that. Okay. Also in your packet is the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, floodplain administrator. I know this has been brought to you before. Floodplain administrator by, if you look down through there, the city council hereby appoints the mayor administrator to implement the provisions of this ordinance. It's here and referred to as a floodplain administrator, that's under article four, section A.
You got that either.
That's the thick packet.
Okay.
It's here.
Where did you read that from? I'm sorry, John.
Article four.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I got it.
Administration.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah. So it points me as the floodplain administrator. Then a little further on, if you go into it, under section C of article four, it says that the, uh, duties can be, there are, the floodplain administrator and or designated staff are hereby authorized and directed to enforce the provisions of this ordinance. We actually have a contract with Commonwealth Engineering to do any kind of detailed analysis on the floodplain administration.
You say that's in article four?
What is?
Just what you read about.
Under section C, duties and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator. There's no page number, I apologize for that.
That's, that's all right.
Duties and responsibilities.
I'm still working. Sorry, I got it, found it.
Finally.
Do we have a degree of the Commonwealth to make a detailed analysis of any floodplain? I just want to point that out, that there's designated staff.
And that's you are the
I am the floodplain administrator by, by designation, because I have, I can appoint and use a staff.
Is that what you're gonna do? Is that not doing, you know, who that is?
I have no idea, it's gonna be Tom Robinson before. We've probably won.
I have a question. At one time, it was Jathan Wright, correct? You guys.
My understanding it was.
It was Jathan Wright. Did he receive any money for it, or was that just under his title? You don't know?
No idea.
Then it became Claudius. Was and then Tommy Bailey. But Tom got an increase a certain amount. So what changed with the money? Why are we paying somebody? Jathan Wright was part of his job, Claudia was part of her job. Then we reappointed, or we appointed Tommy Bailey with the increase. And now we're appointing someone else with the increase, which is, is, but when did the money come into play?
The money didn't come into play with Commonwealth, we had
No, I'm not saying Commonwealth, I'm saying the administrator that you're appointing.
It's not coming into point for me to have the increase.
I, say that again, please?
It's, I mean, I'm not getting the increase.
I know you're not getting the increase, but someone is. And I, I'm just wondering, maybe I'm not making myself clear, when the dollar amount, or the two dollar, or five dollar, or when the amount, when we started paying someone from the city to do this position?
When did that start?
Yeah.
At the last year's approval of the salary ordinance.
Okay. But now it's been taken away.
A dollar and a half?
From, from an individual, it's not being paid to anyone right now?
Right now, we're probably waiting for there's a time to do the interface. Have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five oh eight floodplain administrator.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight floodplain administrator. Any discussion? Call for vote?
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Tony Richards?
Yes.
All right, last item on new business says the appointment of John Phillips to be developed commission, that's going to be withdrawn. He's decided not to serve on the commission. So that completes new business.
Do you have someone in mind?
At this point, I do not. They just met Thursday and he came in Friday, so he didn't want to go on the commission, so I haven't had a chance to roll it.
Do you have offhand who are those members?
Cheryl Hamilton, Jathan Wright, Jenny Bradbury, Keegan Edman, and Jared Albright is the non-voting member representing the school. And Greg Sapp has resigned from.
I was on there.
Oh. Okay.
Art Mahes reporting.
Uh, Eric Carpenter, fire chief, um, don't have a whole lot to report, just that we had a hundred and eleven total loans for the month. Ninety-two of those was EMS calls and nineteen was fire calls. We did have one, uh, fireman that resigned recently, so we'll be having an opening there. I'll begin with the mayor and seeing, you know, getting a hiring process going with that, so. But that's about all I have to report unless you guys have any questions. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report unless you have any questions. I've been in touch with the lady that runs the fault festival, which will be going on the twenty-seventh down here. I've got to talk to you some on what we're gonna do there with the building that failed because they used that area, so no big deal on that issue, but.
What time did you have, Kelly?
We'll just make sure they got their power and trash cans and everything, so she's got it all under control. Our crews are staying busy. So, we want, so. Any questions? Mary, you have any? All right, thank you.
Dave? Paul Clark's on vacation this week.
Davis Herring, Lieutenant of the Police Department. Dispatch had eight hundred and eighty-four calls coming in. Out of those, eight hundred and eighty-four, four hundred and seventy-one required a police response. Uh, our officers did a hundred and forty-nine traffic stops, which they issued fourteen citations for. I think Paul mentioned the safe exchange, uh, the last meeting. Uh, we got the lines painted, so it's up and going. That's all I've got. Any questions?
Do you know anything, and this may not be in your, when the trick or treat, the trick or treaters are this year?
I have not heard anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Slower, General Manager Utilities, don't have a lot to be poured on, but we're still working with Commonwealth engineers and NDOT representatives regarding the culvert replacement there at the auto zone under the highway there. and the NDOT representatives regarding the culvert replacement there at the AutoZone under the highway there. Uh, we're gonna have to reroute a, a large diameter water main and natural gas and, and overhead electric. Uh, so it's a little busy in that intersection, so we've been doing some pot hauling, trying to find the uh, the water main there. It's um, it's crowded with the storm sewer that the, uh, we did insert well years ago. So it's gonna be a challenge for us, so see how all that, that shakes out. We did have about four days of pipeline safety, natural gas pipeline safety inspections with the Indiana, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission last week. And everything came out very well. They were very impressed with the level of documentation that, that our guys are doing with their, with their natural gas utilities, so. That I would answer. Any questions?
Is the pipe, uh, water lines, is that moving along? The copper lines, not copper, lead water lines?
We had the leaks and then all the pipeline safety inspection things we've been doing. So that's put us a little behind on trying to identify, do more identification of those service lines. But hopefully we get back on that. We've got a little over two thousand yet that we have to identify before October-ish of twenty twenty-seven. That sounds like a ways off, but it's, it's really not, so. Something that we, we've gotta tackle pretty, pretty hot, maybe for too long. Thank you.
Public comment. I know in the past I read our public comment policy, but it is posted on the door for your review and understanding. So I will not read it this evening. Uh, the only one I have signed up, I think, is AC, which is Alan Cofer, his subject is various.
That's me.
How about I, did you get three minutes?
Okay, let me know when the shot clock starts.
This is it, so.
Oh, cool. It's only two forty.
Yeah, two forty, yeah.
Yeah, I want everything I paid the other one.
You're paying extra now.
Operator, okay. Can you see it?
Alright, all is in bounds. Um, just a, a few small things. Uh, wanna thank God for us to all be here tonight. I think sometimes we kinda get so wrapped up in our own little things in life, like I was in a hurry to get here, thinking about work, this and that. We gotta slow down and think about why all of our hearts are beating here tonight, so I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, thank you all for serving, cause this never looks like any fun to me, even though I show up and watch you all do it, so I appreciate that. Um, Police Department, the chief isn't here tonight, but a few months ago now, I had a concern. I stopped by the PD, he wasn't around. I gave him a scribbled post-it note and he called me back. And I was just thankful for that, that he went out of his way to do that. We had a good conversation about a concern I had. So I say that um, as an example of my third and final point, I still have two minutes, but probably won't use it all. Um, whenever folks in government or civil service are communicating with the public, we're better off for it. So just wanna encourage everybody to do what you can to keep, keep that traffic full in two ways. Um, for those of you already doing a good job with that, I appreciate it. But I, I think, I think the country's gonna be in for pretty rough times. I think small towns like Linton, um, they're gonna be experiencing a lot of difficulties here in the future. Like we're already seeing some small towns encountering in Indiana. Um, I'm a foreigner here, I'm from a town smaller than Linton. Um, so I just, I think as we enter those hard times, which I'm expecting, um, that communication between folks in government, fire department, police department, it's gonna be even more important, so. That's it. Somebody else can have my one minute? Thanks.
Alright. Okay, uh, with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have some comments. I didn't sign up, but uh, the nativity scene out at the park got, you can't put OSB board out in open weather and expect nothing to happen to it. But um, Crystal Woods, I, she contacted me and we got together and um, she's talked with, I believe, Tammy, Tommy Lynn and Tammy Wright, I think you put them on, kinda helped with the Christmas out at the park. Um, she was gonna get with them, if she hasn't, she will. But um, Crystal's church, Cowford Baptist Church in Linton, um, they're right next to the Elks Club, has agreed to buy a nativity scene, um, put it up, the east end of the park where it usually was, uh, remove it and store it yearly. So just, I know there was some things on Facebook, people were aggravated with it. It, no one did anything intentionally to hurt the nativity scene. It's just like I said, you can't take OSB board and put it out in weather and not, and expect it to last because it, because it won't. And secondly, uh, this Thursday, September eleventh at six thirty at the Roy Clark Building, we're going to have another community meeting about the swimming pool. So if anyone is interested, I'd appreciate it if you've come, you could come. We've raised, since April, we've raised close to three, thirty thousand dollars. Um, we're still raising money, um, and that's the time to come. We do have some renderings of, of drawings. We'd like to see the pool improved, so if you have any questions or any concerns about the pool. I had a gentleman call me today, he'd served on the pool board for twenty years, he wanted to know what he could do. I told him to show up at the meeting Thursday and we'd find something for him to do, so that's all I have.
Any other comments? Okay, have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded to adjourn, favor?
Aye.
Aye, you can go through the call, to do the call for vote.
Linda Bedwell? Yeah. Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.